Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And it is for closed session, so if we could have a motion for closed session.
Madam Chairman, I move that we enter into closed session under the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, Code of Virginia. That's what it says, Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, A5 Industrial Business Prospects. Discussion concerning the business or industry considering expansion with no previous announcement being made.
There is a personnel matters at the end of the. That's not included with this one. If you want to include the two together and think you have time to do them, you'll have to state so when you go in. If you want to leave it to the end, you can just continue as you have it.
Let's leave it to the end then. And do I need to invite any one here to attend with us?
Yes, you'll need to invite John and you'll need to ask the judges to leave for a few minutes and then come back in. And I'm not sure how long it's going to take us to get to the preliminary work, maybe five or 10 minutes and then we'll holler at y'all.
And Kendra.
Yes, thank you.
And Kendra.
So is attorney included automatically?
It's really you guys both can come in and then you can invite whoever you want to come in and ask, excuse whoever you want to go out while you're in closed session talking about why you're here.
Well, we'll invite you in right now to start with.
Well, I appreciate that.
To amend the motion to include attorney.
I think the motion is to include the board is going into closed session. While you're in closed session, you can invite and excuse staff or individuals as you please. I don't think they have to be in the motion to say, we need Johnny, Mary, and Sam in. Otherwise, we'd have to come out, go back in, and invite somebody new in.
Got you.
Got you.
Thank you.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll vote for it.
Okay, all right.
I'll move.
Okay, well.
Well, he don't care.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Two seconds, please.
All right.
All right.
Need to make a motion without the resolution.
We'll do this one when we start our next meeting, won't we?
I think you go ahead and adopt your resolution when you're right now.
Right now, okay.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution and read it.
All right, Madam Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that whereas the Smith County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, where as Section 2.2-3712, the Code of Virginia, requires a certification by the Smith County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Therefore, it be resolved that the Smith County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, where only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Smith County Board of Supervisors.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
You just need to recess until you start the next meeting.
Yeah. Yes.
They will be. Jointly meet with them at seven to hear. It doesn't matter. You don't have to sit there, but obviously it's planning commission to open meetings. If you want to sit here, it's nothing to hurt us.
But when is the joint public hearing? Is there someone supposed to sit here?
No, they're sitting at the table.
And normally they would, but in a joint meeting, you got to sit there and they sit there.
Got you, got you, got you, okay.
I'm here, brother.
I think it's a good counter. And we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. And we'll go to citizens' time and Mr. Richard Sims has signed up to speak.
Richard Sims of 217 Rambling Ivy Trail in South Carolina. I'm here tonight to try to find out why the ordinance committee voted no on a zoning that I requested. There's lots on Anderson Avenue that are trying to sell for some wanting that wants to put a mobile home on it. At this time, we can't do that because of the zoning. Can't apply for a special use permit, although there is 16 mobile homes on that property, on that street with a mobile home park across the street where I want to put a mobile home. And I'd like, I'd just like to know why.
Okay. We're going to be discussing that as we get into the committee reports, Mr. Sims. So if you want, it'll just be, as we get through our agenda, we'll get to that and then you can have some discussion on it.
The night you mean?
Uh huh.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and next. All right, so we'll now close citizens' time. And is there somebody else that would wish to speak? Anybody else? Okay, so next is the Virginia Employment Commission request for the use of office space.
Madam Chairman, there's a lady coming from the Virginia Employment Commission to speak on that. I don't think she's here yet.
Okay.
I told her it might be closer to 7:30 with where we got.
Okay, we can come back to that.
She's outside. Is she outside?
In the parking lot.
Oh, in the parking lot?
Yeah.
I think we'll just move on if she's not right up.
Want to do the ordinance committee?
Well, if you would like to, put the move to the ordinance committee. Okay. Thank you, Roscoe.
Ordinance committee met at 4:52 PM. Mr. Williams, own administrator, presented a request to receive the place of single wide manufactured home in a residential district currently zoning ordinance 3-3.1 does not allow a single wide mobile home to be placed on a residential lot by right or by a special use permit. He requests the direction from the committee as to whether or not to revise the ordinance to allow a single wide mobile home to be placed in a residential zone. He then presented a map of the area in question and a brief history on the property, most recent application. He stated that the land is large enough to place a double wide or modular or a stick-built home. He also noted that to change the ordinance would change the zoning regulations for the entire county and could produce a situation where property is devalued by existence of a single wide in a residential area. Another option is to rezone the whole subdivision to agricultural, but that would allow for many other uses to be brought into that subdivision. After discussion, Mr. Atkins made a motion to leave the ordinance as is and not make any changes. I seconded the motion and all agreed unanimously. It's a committee recommendation.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that?
May I ask, Roscoe, I don't think Charlie was here. May I ask a question? I think, you remember when Buddy Kyle went through this similar thing in McCrayton?
He was saying that, but I don't, not really, but.
I think his son, his son put a trailer down there and he'd only.
Yeah, that's in the corporation limits of law.
Is that in the corporation?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yeah, I know exactly where Buddy lived. Signs right there in front of his house.
Okay, maybe it was in the corporations. I was thinking Clay told me one time we went through this similar thing with his. And they had to redo it. I was hoping Clay would.
He'll be back in a minute and we can discuss it. I can get the rest of, then we can come back to that if you want, Madam Chairman.
That would be, that would be good.
Okay, Mr. Williams then stated that in the past, Matt Rogers Planning Commission approved comprehensive land maps for future land use. He compared these maps to conservation easements to show how much land was in conservation easements and could not be developed. He then explained that he uses future land use maps to approve or deny the conservation easement results. Request, I'm sorry. Mr. Atkins made a motion to take a future land map use to the Board of Supervisors for adoption. Motion was seconded by myself and all agreed unanimously. That's a committee recommendation.
Is there any further discussion on that? Is there a motion for this part?
It's a committee recommendation, you just need to vote.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Which one I read?
That we're doing is about.
The land use?
The maps.
Okay.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Williams, then continued that the nuisance ordinance needs to be reviewed because it is time-consuming to have a public meeting each time he receives a complaint. Currently, when he receives a complaint, he sends a correction letter to the property owner and the issue is corrected. However, the issue is would determine what is a public nuisance as defined by code and who can make that determination. With nothing further to discuss, Mr. Atkins made a motion to adjourn the meeting. I seconded and we adjourn. Now, Mr. Williams, just here, you can go back to that other part.
Okay. Clay, if you could maybe expound a little bit more for Mr. Sims on his petition to have a special use permit to have a single wide mobile home.
Yeah, so the issue that was brought up by Mr. Sims was the fact that he owns properties as unresidential and in our residential zoning classification, we only allow a handful of things by right, single-family dwelling being one of them. And manufactured homes are allowed, but they have to be a double wide or wider. And then there's a list of things that are allowed by special use permit, but a single wide is not one of them. So basically, he asked for that to be considered, you know, for a change to the ordinance to be made to allow single wides by some means. So that can be accomplished a number of ways. And these were discussed during the meeting. One, you can rezone the property, rezone it from residential to AR, agriculture rural. That allows single family, allows single wides. Another possibility was to change the ordinance to allow single wides in the residential district or to put them in by special use. I think, and I'm not trying to speak for the committee, but I think two of the factors that weighed in pretty heavily was, one, that this isn't a change just for this subdivision. If this change goes into effect, it would affect all, you know, areas zoned residential in the county. And I think that was a pretty big deal. The second thing was that we reached out to the town of Marion and we discovered, and I don't know if you all familiar, but the subdivision in discussion adjoins the town of Marion. And a part of this subdivision is within the town of Marion. They too have those lots zoned residential. And they don't allow single wides to be replaced in that district. So for the sake of continuity, I think the committee sort of factored that in, that if you jump across the town limits and the conditions were the same, the result would be the same. Single wides are just not allowed. And I think for those two reasons, and again, Roscoe and Charlie are with us and they may have something to add to it, but I think for those two reasons primarily, it was decided not to recommend a change to our ordinance that would affect the residential zoning district, you know, countywide.
Mr. Sims, do you have any further questions to ask of Mr. Williams?
I guess the biggest question I'll have now, what's the difference between a double wide and a single wide? If you look at the run of them, they both look the same.
I mean, quite simply, a single wide is a single section home. And a double wide would be.
I understand that.
Would be a multi-section.
Well, then, if you look at the run of them, they're not overhired. But although, although they look the same, you don't know how deep it is. Do you get to the side?
And that's the point I was agreeing, but there is a difference, I mean.
On, 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 but it all depends. That many mobile homes on that street. I mean, you got, you got me handcuffed. I can't sell the property. And nobody, every time I get somebody to cross that, to this property, they want to build a house, they want the, because of the mobile home park across the street. And I haven't had any luck getting double wides on it. It's probably been filled quite some time. And I'm just, I finally got a property that I feel could sell. And that's, that's my, I just, I'd like to sell the property and we can try and get a start. Try to do that and we're restricted.
Yeah, I understand who we're coming from, but again, that's a big question to discuss.
So, well, tell them what I can do.
I mean, we can talk about the other options, but the other options are rezone the AR, agriculture rural. We've done that in one other case over in Sawall where an entire subdivision was rezone to AR to allow this very time. That's a bit more than involved process. The board has the right to take that initiative on and just say, hey, we want to rezone this area from residential to AR, agriculture rural. And then all of the folks in that development and that surround that development would get a letter and have a chance to show up for a public hearing to consider rezoning it to AR. But if successful, then that door is open for every lot owner in that subdivision. But that, that would be realistically the only other real option to get single wides into that area. Well, I don't know how much we want to debate this here, but another concept is that, you know, the ones that are there are considered nonformal uses. There are restrictions on them. If they were removed, they only have a period of time to be replaced. And if they don't replace them in that period of time, they lose the right to have a single wide on their lot.
Any further comment or discussion? Okay, it was the recommendation of the committee to not grant the special use. All in favor? All opposed? Let's go back to the original agenda. Is the person here that was going to talk about Virginia Employment Commission request for use of office space? Okay.
How y'all it's happening? Or Elian, I should say. My name is Kristy Lowe. I'm the manager at the Virginia Point Commission Office in Withfield and over at the affiliate office here in Marion, here in this building on the fourth floor. This is Lisa Reed. She's the WSR senior staff that works here in the facility on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Our office hours are currently 8:30 to 3 o'clock on Tuesday and Thursday. And then we do have veteran staff that comes on Friday by appointment only. We also have, on Fridays, we have, well, the office is not open, but we have RSEA appointments scheduled throughout the day on Friday. And Virginia Employment Commission has been looking to move their office, the main office in Withfield, for some time. They've been looking at some different locations and buildings. And there's been some limited availability, but we are in the process of moving to a different location. There has been a decision to try, for a variety of reasons, for our landlords, some of the conditions of the current site that we're at and some other reasons, for us to move temporarily out of the spot we're in before a permanent location has. They're not sure if they're going to build at this point or renovate. But they, we have a six-to-month timeframe for that to happen. The problem we're having is the temporary site that we have potentially there in Withfield is not large enough to accommodate everyone we have in our office. We currently have 12 employees, which includes different programs and partners within the facility. So during that process, while we were looking at that process, we were trying to look at, where could we potentially locate some of those employees? And we were looking at current locations. So we have an office in Galax, we have an office in Radford, and we have an office here, affiliate here in Marion. And so we knew that, we currently use room four, I'll make sure I get these right, 425, 424 and 425, that's the rooms that we currently have our main office and our resource room in. When the veterans representative comes on Friday, they've allowed him to use room 430. When I was talking to Lisa, we became aware that there's a couple additional spaces here in the building. So I was able to reach out and talk to Lisa and see if there might be the possibility of using those additional offices for a six-to-a-month period for a couple additional staff. And what we were looking at in making that determination too is where the staff lived. These staff live in this direction. So instead of having them drive all the way to Galax or all the way to Radford to work, this would allow them to come to a location a little closer to their residence and still be able to provide services. We would also want to, because we would be here on a larger presence in a larger period of time, we would want to extend and open our office hours up additionally as well. So we would not only be open on Tuesday and Thursday, we would be open our hours from 8:30 to 3:00 Monday through Thursday. On Friday, we would continue the veterans' appointments and the RSEA. If we do end up having an additional WSR staff come, we may even offer those services on Friday as well. So for the duration of the time we're here, whether it be six months or nine months, we would offer services on a more full-time basis. And we will also be encouraging the citizens here to come here and be served versus coming to Withfield since the office we have there and the staff we have there will be smaller for that period of time. With the recent layoffs in the area and the trade petitions we have, we have a large customer base right now in Marion and in the Smith County area. We have the TRW, I think they recently laid off 11 additional people. And prior to that, we're still working with the two larger, with the two larger groups of 75 and 25 from previous months. So we're still doing that as well. So being allowed to be able to use those spaces would help us greatly during this transition time. So I'm coming to ask to see if that might be a possibility and propose that possibility and see if it might be possible for that period of time to use those additional spaces.
Madam Chairman, you all have a map there at your desk. Two offices up that are available, 432 and 433. The Department of Education was using 432, so they have some office furniture in there. But I spoke with the school board office and they're no longer using us in that office. So 432 and 433 are empty. There's also some storage across the hall in 427 and 429 that might be an alternative. I think that, I'm not sure if it's DFS or school board, have some, some things in there that possibly could be used. But you specifically, I think, had spoke about the two on the end.
We're flexible on that point at this point. As long as it has a desk and a chair. We've, what we've been able to do, the staff that would be coming here, I think they'll be operating off of hotspot wifi. We've been able to work that out this week and they'll be able to use cell phones during the time that they're here. So we won't have to really increase our technology use while we're here. We've been able to work that out this week. Because originally, we were asking about some phones and some different things. That's separate from the fax that we've discussed recently. So that is still coming. We are, we did recently ask permission to put a fax line in, in our office here because later this year, the Virginia Point Commission is changing the way they do you unappointment. And so it's going to be more technology-based and will require claimants to potentially need more access to scanning of information, faxing information. So we're putting a multifunction machine in here that will allow a larger number of copies, fax and scan capability, which this building has that, but we didn't have that in our office. So that's going to happen. I think next week is when Verizon's supposed to come in and put in the line and then we'll have the machinery probably later that week or first of the next week.
Okay, so I'm hearing you say that we do have space available.
Yes, we do have those two spaces, those two office spaces available.
And they are looking to move quickly. They're hoping tentatively have us out of our current space within the next, next week to two weeks.
Is there a discussion?
I have a question.
No, you can want to.
Oh, I'll do.
Oh, okay.
I'm just curious, when you're talking about your new location, is that going to be in Wes County? Or can we smile pretty and ask for you to please come to Wes County?
Well, honestly, at this point, the plan is to retain the comprehensive center there in Wes County. We have always completed the work enlarging our staff here and I will, I will continue to do so. This presence here, I think, is a good thing because if there does turn out to be a situation where we don't get the facility that we want in Wes County, well, they will be looking at other locations. I cannot make that as far as a statement. But, you know, Lisa and I have been working on different ways to try to solidify at least a maybe, you know, a different, a level of staffing here in this office.
Well, I think your presence here is certainly important and that's a good resource, particularly in child placement. And I know Lisa has worked great with folks who've been displaced due to closures or layoffs. So it's great to have you all here and there are some available properties and we'd love to see you all here if it comes out.
I will make sure that I make them aware of what's available.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry.
I have two questions. The first one is for Ms. Lisa. Are these offices pretty much ready to, for them to move in, the two respective offices at 432 and 433?
Other than, since you're bringing cell phones, you're using your cell phones? Yes, I think they're pretty much ready, if you're not wrong, Lisa.
Okay.
And I will point out that 426 and 428 that you didn't mention is for DARS. DARS uses those offices, is that correct? And we do have an existing MOU with the Virginia Employment Commission for them to use those offices. So it just has to be modi, it would have to be modified to include any new offices.
Want to follow up if I might?
Sure.
Refresh my memory, you said it, but it went right through my ears. The timetable for the auxiliary rooms, are you looking at how long?
Right now, tentatively, we're looking at six to nine months.
Six to nine months.
Depending on what they choose, if they chose to refurbish a location, you know, or to go in and just build it out, it's already existing, that would probably be a six-month timetable. If they choose to do something more complex, it could taste closer to nine months. So that's why I've asked for, you know, an expanded window of six to nine months. If you want to approve six months and then revisit, we can do that as well. At this point, the final destination hasn't been chosen or the final choice hasn't been chosen. So I really can't define exactly six months or nine months. And it could be a little less, you know, depending on how things progress.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, is there compensation from the state on this money-wise or anything to the county?
At this point, we're just asking kind, but if that needs to be discussed.
I was just curious.
But we just, like I say, we just, this has kind of been a quick process. So at this point, I've just kind of reached out trying to, we've got actually two employees going to our Galax office as well. And like I said, we were really looking at where do people live and what's the next close location? And we have to move quickly, but if that's something we need to discuss as a part of our MOU process, I'd be glad to bring that forward. as a part of our MOU process, I'd be glad to bring that forward and, and have them look at that.
Do you pay rent now for the rooms you use?
We do not. It was an agreement with the, um, previously in order for us to remain present, have a presence here, that they would allow us to use that space. That's the, how the MOU states that we, the office was originally closed here in Marion completely. And this was the agreement that they made to allow services to be available here directly in the county.
Anything further?
I have one follow-up. Do you have any off-the-cuff statistics to show the impact you're making with our citizens locally for the use of the facilities here and what you project that the expanded two-site, two rooms might bring?
Well, I didn't bring my numbers, I should have. I, we thought about that, but, um, you know, Lisa's is my, like I say, two days a week. And I say very rarely does she see less than ten to twenty people per week. Um, and most of those individuals come in and they need direct assistance. They'll have assistance with their resumes, assistance with the job search process, following their claim. Um, by having the other individuals here, for instance, the tax rep serves this county, so an employee wouldn't have to drive to Withfield to meet with the tax rep per se, so they'd be able to serve them right here in the county during the time that they're here. We would have a veteran staff here, so all your veterans will be served Monday through Thursday instead of having to come on Friday just for appointments. Uh, and, you know, the ti, the navigator works with us on our trade petitions and she's been involved with the trade petitions that we've had with the recent factory layoffs that we've had. I also feel like we'll probably have an additional WSR that'll be here, which, uh, will be, make two people be here that will kind of provide a larger number of services. Plus, we won't have, once people know the services are here, we put an ad in the paper and let them know we're going to be here, the ones that do drive to our office in Withfield on the other days of the week, you know, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, um, they would then be able to be served here in the area. So I think that would only increase our numbers. RSEA-wise, do you remember? Estimate-wise, how many? And I can send you that information. We had, we brought it here when we had a meeting, what came to the meeting, what? November, December? Um, and at that time, we, you know, we had also talked about trying to expand the services and had talked about additional space. Um, because what, what we have currently, we can't, uh, we really can't house another person in the two rooms that we have, um, full-time. Um, but I can send you a report with those numbers tomorrow if you would like.
Madam Chairman, I have one, um, follow-up, if it's not fogging. We do this, you expand into these two rooms and have phenomenal success with our clients, our, our citizens. What's the likelihood of them making this a permanent arrangement moving forward or is it just a temporary mandate till they get the offices up there?
Well, at this point, I would, I can't clarify that because I don't know. Um, I, I think that if, if it shows the traffic flows there to support an additional staff, that would be what I would, would seek, either additional days or additional staff. And we've had those discussions. We're at a, um, I think we're at a rebuild point, uh, with the VEC itself as to, you know, everything today is going electronic. Um, and you have to show the customer base and the support that you're providing in order to justify having additional staff. And I think they will look at those numbers. This will give me an opportunity to show them those numbers. I can't, uh, you know, it, with the situation I have now, I can't necessarily say, I can show them that without having additional time to do it. So I think it could have a positive impact, uh, even if it only had a positive impact of us being able to provide an additional staff person here on the days we're here or adding a day of service. So I would fight for that. If the traffic supports it, I will definitely go to them and try to do that.
Thank you.
Well, I think it would be wonderful to have more hours for the citizens in Smith County. Um, you know, if they're unemployed, sometimes there's a hardship in having to travel to another location to, to get their benefits. So I think it's, it's great, especially if we have the space and we can accommodate that. I think it's benef, it's mutually beneficial for everybody. Chair, I have a motion from the board to, in what period of time? Six to nine months or, six months or nine months?
I would say nine.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your graciousness. Thank you so much. And, uh, while we're here, I will try to make sure that we provide some additional services. We'll try to make sure we do some workshops in the community and do some different things. We'd also talked about trying to have another job there in the area. We had one previously, so we will work diligently to make sure that we serve you well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda is the contract modification for Sholey.
We met, we met with Sholey this week and, uh, part of their expansion project included some tobacco funds and some Commonwealth opportunity funds. Now, there was a three-year timetable of this project. They've already met, um, probably eighty percent of their expected performance and it's, uh, been a little over a year. Uh, what we're trying to do now is to get in contact with Tobacco Commission and to simply can't free up this money. That was their request to us. I don't have the documents here, um, Kendra and myself, but I've been trying to find a way to be able to get the money out to them. I just wanted to give you an update, let you know that we're working on. I do believe that by the next, uh, board meeting, then I should have some documents before you, that would explain what, uh, your obligations would be in the timetable to deal with.
Thank you for that update. And then we have a budget committee, uh, report. Charlie?
Yes, the budget committee met Tuesday, February eighteenth at three-thirty. Uh, the, uh, we had, uh, we started a meeting with some budget transfers. Kelly requested the CSA budget amendment request of six hundred thousand dollars. This is a state portion of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and a matching county portion of one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. This was due to the increases in number of children in the CSA. And as you know, when you're budgeting at the start of the year, you, you just have to go by prior and you, you know, judge or someone, all of a sudden, you could end up with a lot more kids in the program. This is one of those years, so, uh, we, uh, motion was made to approve a six hundred thousand dollar amendment as requested by the, uh, Mallory and the second by Royal Oak District, Judy White. And we all agreed unanimously. That was a budget, uh, that was a budget committee recommendation, motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Second, we had a, uh, request, uh, from Animal Patrol for a budget transfer. A discussion was held about how the efficiency of the new electrical heating system allows these funds to be available to pay the veterinarian bill. Right now, our veterinarian bills are because of some of the state rules and so are just, we have to, we have to provide the care and it's all there is to it. And it's running a lot higher than what we had budgeted. However, because we changed the heating system down there and upgraded it, we have quite a savings. So we're requesting that that be, we'll be allowed to transfer from ten thousand out of the heating system expense line to the veterinarian expense line. That motion would be, uh, Mallory made the motion and the motion was seconded by Julia White.
Anything further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Then we had a request from the attorney's, attorney, Commonwealth Attorney's Office requesting ten thousand dollars. A motion was made by the Royal Oak District Supervisor, Judy White, to approve the budget transfer request as presented, seconded by the, um, Ryan Valley District Supervisor, Mallory Deal, all agree unanimously. And I forget exactly what that was all about.
Vacancy savings?
Right, vacancy savings. In other words, money they could spend because someone didn't spend, they didn't spend all their salary money, they used, they used that to buy office supplies. That's money that will be reimbursed by the state.
Right.
We approved that as a, uh, committee recommendation, we approved it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
And then we had a, a budget request from the Sheriff's Office. Uh, four thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. A motion was made to approve the budget transfer made by the Ryan Valley District, Mallory Deal. A motion was seconded by Royal Oak Supervisor, Judy White, all agree unanimously. Uh, once again, I don't.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Um, then we proceeded to, we, we put out a RFP for attorney services. Lisa Richardson reviewed the qualifications listed in the proposal in Texas and the rates submitted to the county as follows. Scott Farley, um, he gave us three proposals, one hourly billion, two hundred and fifty per hour in increments of one tenth of an hour for, for Scott and for Don Martin, hourly rate of one seventy-five for associates. Or we could go with a contract that would pay a fixed monthly retainer that covers a set number of hours and the county would pay an hourly rate for time exceeding the set number of hours or a flat monthly retainer negotiated to include all attorney fees. Then we had a, one from Penn Stewart, is hourly rate of two hundred and sixty for partners, one ninety-five for associates and one twenty for paralegals or a monthly retainer arrangement if the county so desired. And then Graham Law Firm, we had a proposal of hourly rate of one seventy-five. This discussion continued if attorney could be hired as a full-time employee. Ryan Valley District Supervisor, Mallory Deal indicated she would like to see a comparison of the cost and ask, ask if we could submit an advertisement for a full-time attorney. And stated that we can use the current RFP to have an hourly contract while we look for a full-time attorney. It was recommended by me that the local criminal attorney's association be utilized to find a full-time attorney. A motion was entered to, into an hourly contract with Scott Farley and Graham Law was made by Ryan Valley Supervisor, Mallory Deal. The motion was seconded by Royal Oak District Supervisor, Judy White, all agree unanimously.
Any discussion?
Just for clarification, you got two firms, one at one seventy-five and one?
Right. Our, our intentions are for the, for the deeds and so forth like that, where we can just run down to Graham's office, we'll do that. We'll use the, uh, uh, Farley firm for the board meetings, for the, uh, items that requires that type of work.
So I guess my only other question was, did Graham turn one in just for the deeds or for?
He turned it just hourly rate, that's all he requested.
Whole thing.
Right.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
A motion to advertise for a full-time attorney until March thirty-first was made by Royal Oak Supervisor, Judy White, seconded by Ryan Valley District, Mallory Deal, all agree unanimously.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
A budget process discussion was held concerning the timing of the meetings and about the process. There was also a discussion about the use of past budgets to predict the upcoming budget. Discussion continued about past due tax collections. It was also noted that Commissioner Revenue and the Treasurer should be invited to the next budget meeting to discuss revenue expectations for the upcoming fiscal year budget. We adjourned the meeting at four twenty-one.
Thank you, Charlie. That concludes our regular business. Uh, next on the agenda is closed session. Do I have a motion for closed session?
Madam Chairman, I move to be going to closed session under the Code of Virginia, Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, A one Personnel Matters. A discussion, consideration or interviews of respective candidates for employment in contract. And also a discussion and review of administrative staff.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? And we're now in closed session.
Okay. Madam Chairman, whereas the Smith County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, Section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Smith County Board of Supervisors as such a meeting is conducted in performing Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Smith County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, woman-only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings where required, open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closing meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the Smith County Board of Supervisors.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to offer another motion. I move that this board direct interim county administrator to terminate the employment of an administrative assistant, Kelly Woods, as an at-wheel employee of the county.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. That concludes our business. I think we'll start with supervisors' comments. Your comments? Um, I'd like to thank you all for coming and for your patience with us tonight. It's been a long meeting, but thank you so much for being here.
Thank you all. Again, to come and be safe going home.
Thank you for being here and thank you for having patience with us.
I would echo, echo the same sentiment. Thank you for coming and hanging around late.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some is.
A second? All in favor? I'm doing this meetings. Oh, yeah, are we supposed to, Kathy?